Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Lunenburg Select Board Meeting of Tuesday, April 5th, 2022. I would ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live, on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube page within 24 hours after the conclusion of the meeting. If you would like to participate remotely in tonight's meeting, and you have a computer, smartphone, or tablet, you can use the Zoom application. Tonight's webinar ID is 909-174-0347. If you would like to participate and don't have access to such a device but want to join by phone, you can do so by dialing 888-475-4499. And once again, the webinar ID is 909-174-0347. The posted agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at this meeting, and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. Tonight, we have three members present, and we have one Select Board member, Lou Franco, is remote, so any votes tonight will be roll-call votes. Do we have any public comment from the Board this evening?
No.
Mr. Dwyer?
None.
Mr. Franco? Can you unmute Mr. Franco?
Yes, I have none. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any public comment from the public this evening? Mr. Beardmore?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Peter Beardmore, 282 Pleasant Street, speaking on behalf of myself this evening, but my comments reflect my experience on the Finance Committee over the course of the last several years, but I am speaking for myself. I sent an email to the Town Manager, yourself, Mr. Alonso, you, Mr. Jeffries, and also the Superintendent of Schools, and the Chair and the Vice Chair of the School Committee this past weekend as well. With respect to our facilities management, on the warrant that you'll be reviewing tonight and included in the budget is funding and approval for a new position for Director of Facilities for the town. And it's been my observation and experience over the course of the last several years that we have been lacking in coordination and congruent thought with respect to how we're managing our facilities, both at the town, which is why I think the position is well warranted, but also with the School Department. And for example, an issue that I brought to many of your attention early in the budget season was that the School Department, although well over 50% of our town budget, was well underrepresented on the capital plan this year, and in several previous years as well. And I think part of that is just due to not going through the same process and not looking at our facilities through the same lens. Why am I bringing this up tonight? Right now, we have a vacant DPW Director position. We now, as of last week, I learned this last Friday, have a vacancy for the Director of Facilities in the School Department, and we're about to create a new position for Director of Facilities for the town. That's three positions that we currently do not have filled, one of which we are soon to but have yet to approve. And it strikes me that if this is an issue that we ever want to get to, where we have perhaps unified leadership and management with respect to facilities, we ought to be thinking about this and at least providing a path to get there now, before we go and hire for three new professional positions that are then going to be very entrenched in their own roles. In fact, one of the reasons why I've been given privately why we don't do this, and there are plenty of reasons, but it's just not the way we do it. We have a person for the schools, we have, our facilities are controlled by the DPW, and it'd be too hard to do it now. Well, now, we don't have anybody in those positions. And so, it's an inconvenient time, I recognize. You have a warrant that you are scheduled to approve tonight. We have a budget that we hopefully will be approved, as is at town meeting, but it seems to me that these opportunities you can't plan for. And we are at a potential inflection point here that we may be asking ourselves two or three years down the road, "Well, why didn't we think of that before we went and hired three new people?" So, and I understand that this isn't something that the Select Board can necessarily do on its own, requires the cooperation of the Superintendent and the School Committee, whom I will be speaking to shortly, they are meeting tomorrow night, but I would like to encourage the members of this Board and the Town Manager and the Superintendent and the School Committee to give this some thought, because we need to be more creative, we need to work better together. There are really good examples of having done that across from the town and the schools over the course of the last couple of years. IT is a perfect example of that, where we have been lacking, and the Town Manager went out and did some out-of-the-box thinking, and I think we're in the process of making some really good strides forward. Meanwhile, in other areas, like facilities, and Mr. Jeffries and I sat in a meeting last night, in a lot of ways, we're rehashing the same issues over and over and over again without necessarily moving forward, because many positions are still defending their same turf. And I think we need to, we need to make a change and think a little bit differently. So, with that, I thank you for your time, and hopefully we can make some movement on this. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll be talking about that more when we get to that part of the meeting, when we go over our recommendations for the warrant. Any other public comment from the public?
Rhonda Lazio, 181 Reservoir Road. I noticed Chief Sullivan was on the agenda tonight, and I wanted to make a public comment regarding what happened two weeks ago, tomorrow morning. I mean, yeah, tomorrow morning happened two weeks prior. There was an emergency at my home with my husband, and Chief Sullivan and his staff saved my husband's life. And I just wanted to come forward and thank him publicly. We've already done so privately. And I just wanted to say how fortunate I am to have him as my neighbor for over 22 years, and how fortunate I think we are as a community to have a hands-on Chief. He was the first one at my house. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda, for sharing that.
Okay, any other public comment from the public? Any announcements?
None.
None. 7:05, we have a toll booth fundraiser request by the Shriners Hospital, local Fitchburg Lemanster, on May 28th, 2022. Who is presenting this? Please, just introduce yourself and...
Yes. Good evening, and thank you. My name is Carl, and there's a few of the Shriners here tonight. Basically, we're here to ask for permission to do what we're calling a toll booth, where we'd like to collect money for the Shriners Hospital. As you know, you know, these children do not pay, or the families do not pay anything for their care, and the way we raise money for the transportation of these children from all over the world is by collecting money either in front of grocery stores or doing toll booths. I believe we have done all the things that we were supposed to do. I mean, I've spoken with the Chief of Police, I've talked to the DPW Director on his last day, and we've filled out the waiver forms, although I still have a few more blank ones that if I can recruit any more Shriners, that I would have them fill that out and turn those in at that time.
I'm just looking at the application. So, it is right here in the center of town?
Yes.
Okay. From...
From 8:00 to 1:00.
Okay. I'm assuming that is a Saturday, 28th?
Yes, Saturday, the 28th.
Everything is in order in the application, the police chief's...
There is one question that I did have on the requirements there, though. I believe it said that we have to have a sign the day before where we're going to do it. Is that...
What?
Does that ring a bell, that we have to put a sign saying that what we're going to be doing?
No.
At the site, yeah.
No, just the day of the sign.
Okay, that's fine. And did you want to see what we were going to put up for a sign?
If you have one and you'd like to show it?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
This would be the bucket that we'd be using, and right now, we have about 10 Shriners that would be helping us. And this would be, and this is the sign that we'd be using.
Excellent. And everybody knows about the cones and the safety vests, everybody's going to be over 18.
And I can also tell you that part of the collecting, we do not ask for anything, you know, for those of you who don't know the Shriners...
In front of the mic, please. Only for the people at home, sorry.
For those of you that don't know the Shriners, we're the guys that wear those flower pots on our head. So, we don't go up to cars and say, you know, here, we just stand there and we really don't recruit or ask for any money at all. I think the flower pot says it all.
Sounds good. Anybody have any questions for...
Yes.
Go ahead.
Questions. So, thank you for coming this evening. So, looking through the application and the information that was given to us tonight, you know, most of our requests for fundraisers are very local kind of groups, and you guys are a larger organization. So, I mean, I certainly see all your commercials, well, all the commercials that come on, and I understand that Shriners is really 20 different hospitals you guys all fall under.
There's 11 hospitals here in the United States.
11 total, in the United States?
In the United States.
And then, and it seemed as if the information I found, so this, my question is, some of the information I found, I would just like to get a little more knowledge about. So, according to what I read, as of 2019, there's a $10 billion endowment by Shriners, and $85 million is spent every year in advertisements. There's also different members, it's also as of 2019, there's 21 executives in the organization, all of them are male, and there are many of them that make over $1 million a year. So, can you just explain to me a little bit more about how this money helps out the overall organization?
All right, so what happens is...
If I can just finish the other part of my question. If you can just explain to me how this money helps out the organization, or if it's something that's local, that's tailored to the needs mostly in Massachusetts?
With the money, the large amounts of money that you're talking about, those monies are used for the running of the hospital. What we do as local Shriners, we raise money which is specifically for the transportation of the child.
Okay.
So, I mean...
So, it's a very specific thing that helps out families, I'm guessing, around the area that need the support. Is that a fair understanding?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
Thank you.
Mr. Franco, do you have any questions?
I do not. Thank you.
I thank you for doing it and for applying. You have the approval of the DPW Director, and the Police Chief, so everything is in order. I would entertain a motion regarding the request for the toll booth fundraiser for the Shriners Hospital, local Fitchburg Lemanster, for Saturday, May 28th, 2022, at Main Street and Lancaster, well, not Main Street, and 2A and Lancaster Avenue, center of town, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Correct. So moved?
Second.
Any further discussion? All's in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
An aye for me.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you for the work you guys do.
7:10, a hearing on the non-renewal of the Common Vittler's license for Conrad's. So, we had, this was scheduled, and the tax collector was working with Conrad's. Have they come up with a payment agreement?
Yes, they have, and everything's in order now.
Okay, so we are okay to approve this license then?
Yes.
All right, so we have a letter of approval from the town tax collector that there is a payment plan in place. Do we need a vote on this?
Yes, because we never issued that license.
So, the vote is to approve the Common Vittler's license for Conrad's Drive-In Inc., doing business as Conrad's Drive-In at 835 Massachusetts Ave, Lunenburg.
Move to approve the Common Vittler license for Conrad's?
For a second?
Second.
All's in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
An aye for myself. Okay, so this, we should get that to Conrad's as soon as possible. 7:15, we're catching up to the schedule. Meeting with Fire Chief Sullivan on the Emergency Comprehensive Management Plan. Chief, I want to take the moment to say a well-deserved honor for you and your department. Having had an incident recently, myself, I would offer the same thing. I didn't want to get in the way of that from Ms. Lazio, but I really share all the same sentiments as I shared with you privately.
Thank you. Okay, so the emergency management plan, just again, to review, this is sort of the guidebook for a major incident or disaster within the community. It's not what we would consider day-to-day emergencies, fire, EMS, police. This is events level like the ice storm, the 2011 Halloween storm, major incidents that affect the entire town for a long period of time. We've had this planned for a long time. Basically, what we're doing is updating it into a digital format that make it a little bit easier to update, and to be able to put it on the state's Web EOC platform, so it's accessible to state officials as well. And just a general update, take some names off, add some names on. The plan basically spells out the different steps for different town officials, different town department heads, what they would do in the event of a major incident. It's a template plan from the state, but it also takes into a lot of the institutional knowledge we've developed over the years from some of these big incidents over the last few years. Just to hit some of the features, it's consistent with national and state policies and guidelines. It meets the National Incident Management System, it spells out that. It references other emergency plans, like the continuity of operations plan, hazard mitigation plans, other specialized emergency plans in town, like for the dams that are in town. It contains some threat and vulnerability assessments. It assesses some of target hazards, as you will, in town, and it describes the organization and the responsibilities of the Emergency Operations Center, the operations overall, declaring a state of emergency, which I believe Tom has experienced with more than once, and messaging, communications, training on the functions. Like I said, the update is really to get it in a uniform format for the state, and to be able to have it in an electronic document available on the state level on the Web EOC. So, in a nutshell, that's about it.
I have one question. Since its inception, since it was originally written, which is, I don't know, 10 years about?
Longer than that, yeah. Goes back to the late '90s, early 2000s, the original one.
How many times has it actually been employed?
Probably twice. 2008, 2011.
So, we all, as Selectmen, received this and reviewed it. Obviously, if you have questions, there's some of it that's obviously confidential information, but some of it, if you have any questions, this would be the time to ask the Chief.
No questions.
I have no questions.
Neither do I. Mr. Franco, do you have any questions?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you need a vote?
Well, I would entertain a motion that we accept the revised Emergency Comprehensive Management Plan as submitted by Chief Sullivan, who's also the Emergency Management Coordinator, right?
Correct.
Move to accept the Emergency Comprehensive Management Plan as submitted by Chief Sullivan.
Second.
Any further discussion? All's in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Keep up the good work. 7:20, now we are on time. Class II Auto Dealer License Hearing for Jose Iris de Oliveira Jr., doing business as Lunenburg Auto Center Inc. at 36 Summer Street. This was a continued hearing?
There were two issues that were identified on the property, as far as another business, and the proximity of cars parked to the roadway. Both of the issues have been resolved.
Okay, so everything from your perspective, Madam Town Manager, is up to date?
Yes, this is coming from the Building Commissioner, who did a site inspection today.
Mr. Brilliant?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments or anything from the applicant? I'm sure you're just wanting...
No.
No. Any questions from the Board or anything?
None.
Always good to not offer too much unnecessary information, especially since I ask 1,000 questions, so.
He's going to night school for law. Mr. Franco, any questions?
I do not.
All right, then I would entertain a motion regarding the Class II Auto Dealer License Hearing for Mr. Olivera Jr., doing business as Lunenburg Auto Center Inc. at 36 Summer Street.
I move to approve the Class II Auto Dealer License for Jose Iris de Oliveira Jr., doing business as Lunenburg Auto Center Inc. at 36 Summer Street.
Second.
Any further discussion? All's in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Okay, and we have to sign it in two places here. When can they pick this up?
Elaine will contact you.
Okay, you will be contacted by Town Hall when it is ready to be picked up, and good luck.
All right, thank you so much.
Good luck.
Wow, light speed tonight. We're actually ahead of schedule. Can you handle being ahead of schedule? All right, so we have the Lions Club update on the Lunenburg Food Pantry by Ms. Shipers and Ms. Scouton. Do I say, is it Scouton or Scoaten?
Scouton.
Scouton, okay, all right. And hopefully I pronounced your name right. All right, good. I'm very particular, and I like to get them right, so.
It's my first name that most people get wrong, so. It's Corinne Scouton, 830 Mass Ave, Lunenburg, but I'm here tonight as President of the Lunenburg Lions Club. And we've put together a little presentation, just to give you guys an update on where we're at and what we've been doing. And Anita was kind enough to do that for us, so she's going to take it from here.
Okay.
Anita Shipers, 63 Chestnut Street. Could I have Slide 2, please? Thanks. For people who aren't aware of the Lions Club, the Lunenburg Turkey Hill Family Lions Club has been in existence since 2007, and it's really been growing since then. We currently have 100 paying members in the club, and we have just over 15 non-member volunteers. And it's been really gratifying to see a good number of high school students are involved in those volunteer roles. So, that's awesome. Slide 3, please. The Lions International Organization focuses on five key areas: hunger, vision, hearing, the environment, and diabetes. So, our local chapter supports this by focusing on community service and support, which we do by conducting numerous projects and events throughout the year. You can see the list of some of the items that we're involved in. For those who are not able to see, those include the Community Food Pantry, North Star Meal Donations, we provide funding for vision and hearing exams, and vision and hearing aids. We do senior pancake breakfast once a month, we support the Boys and Girls Club, and we provide scholarships to students. For seasonal events, we do the Easter Egg Hunt, we do the trunk or treat in October for the kids, we assist with town area cleanups, we help with the summer band concerts, and we do the Christmas Tree at the gazebo each year. Slide 4, please. The cost of these projects and events are, for the most part, covered by donations and fundraisers. For the donations, we are very fortunate that we have residents and local businesses who provide donations to us, as well as area churches. We get support from the Salvation Army Fitchburg Chapter. We do food drives throughout the year, and people have been very responsive to our social media requests that we put out. In terms of fundraisers, we have the Christmas Tree Recycling Program that we do in January, and that is where people will make a donation, bring their Christmas tree to us, and we recycle it for them. We have the very popular Meat Bingo twice a year. We do a February Calendar Raffle, whereby people buy a raffle ticket, and there's drawings every day throughout the month of February for some pretty fantastic items. We also do food sales at town events, such as the band concert or public events that are held at the Boys and Girls Club. But I think it's important to note that we also receive some funding. We apply for and receive various grants throughout the year, and that's one area we'd like to try to beef up a little bit more in the future. But the primary focus of the Lunenburg Lions Club is the food insecurity that we're seeing in our community. We're all seeing higher prices in the grocery store and the gas pumps, and the need just continues to grow. Matter of fact, we've seen 100% increase in family need in just the past two months, so the need is real. With the increase in demand, we've made the move to a new location, and Corinne will speak to that in a moment. We were very fortunate. For our past location, the Lunenburg Public Safety Building, the Fire Department allowed us to use some of their space that they had in their section of the building, and we thank them and we appreciate what we had there, but we found that we were just quickly outgrowing that space, and the long stairway up to the second floor has made it really difficult to both receive and then distribute the increasing amount of food that goes in and out of the food pantry every week. So, I'll let Corinne speak to the new location. And Slide 6. So, thanks to the generosity of this Board, and Heather especially working with us, we are now in the TC Passy House building, as you know, in the kitchen area. We also utilize the cafeteria as needed when it's available. It allows us to have walk-in pantry customers come in through the kitchen area and choose their foods if they so like. They can also choose to have items pre-packed for them. And then, we've started a walk-in pantry with the enormous amounts of food that we get donated to us by Hannaford three days a week, so anybody can walk in at any time without an appointment and pick those foods up as well. But I specifically want to, you know, extend our thanks on behalf of the entire Lions Club and the food pantry to you for letting us have this space and expand the way that we have, because it is very obvious that there is a need out there, and we've been reaching lots of new people, which is really great to see. As, you know, Anita alluded to, the larger space allows us to receive more donations, store more food, and we have received a donation of a refrigerator and a freezer commercial grade through the efforts of Mr. McDonald's having a connection, so that really helped us beef up what we're providing to these families. We're able to now do dairy products and fresh produce and frozen meats, which is a huge plus for these families. So, just, you know, I want, thank you for letting me step in here, because I really wanted to be able to say thank you face to face, so. Slide 7, please. So, with our new location and the increased need that we're seeing, the food pantry decided that it made sense to set up an advisory committee made up of residents of all ages, including students, and the purpose of the advisory committee was just to make sure that we were aware of and worked towards trying to meet the different dietary needs of the families that are coming into the food pantry. Slide 8, please. So, as Corinne mentioned, we offer different levels of pantry service. We, the first level is what we call a full-service pantry, where people pre-register to be part of it, and then they make appointments to come in on certain days that we're open, and by doing that, they're able to access the entire goods that we have. they're able to access the entire goods that we have within the pantry. And as Corinne mentioned, there we have dry goods, canned goods, frozen meats, dairy products, breads, fresh produce, and they're able to come as often as they want, weekly, bi-weekly, monthly, whatever works for them. But we ask that they only take with them what they're going to need for that period, and that allows us to make sure that we have food to serve more people over time. The full-service pantries open Sundays from ten AM to eleven AM, and then Tuesday and Thursday evenings from six PM to seven PM. And in this mode, we're serving right now about sixteen families a week in terms of the full pantry service. The next level is the walk-in pantry, and this requires no preregistration or no appointment. People can just come in off the road when they have a chance, and the walk-in pantry is held on the same days but slightly different hours. So on Sundays, the walk-in is open eleven AM to twelve noon, and then Tuesday and Thursday evenings, seven PM to eight PM. And in this mode, right now, we're serving up to about sixty families a week with the walk-in pantry. The walk-in pantry provides the meats, the vegetables, and the breads, but it's on a first-come, first-served basis. Next slide, please. I just want to touch on the donations a little bit more. The food pantry is very grateful for all that we get, and Hanford provides both food and monetary donations to the pantry. They've been so generous, and matter of fact, they've even increased the amount of food that they've been giving us recently to help with our increased demand. But we're also grateful that our residents and our local businesses also provide donations in the form of foods and monetary donations. We also do the food drives that are conducted by the Lions and our schools and our businesses, and these happen throughout the year. With the monetary donations that we receive, we use that money to buy specific foods to fill the gaps of what we have in the pantry, so that we can be sure that we're offering the full complement of nutritional foods to the families that come in. Next slide, please. So I don't need to tell you that an organization like this requires a lot of volunteers, and I appreciate our time tonight, because I really do want to put the word out to everyone that we really do need more volunteers at the food pantry. Even if people can give us, you know, a few hours a month, it'll make a huge difference in helping us meet those goals that we're trying to reach. We've made some improvements in how we have people sign up. There's a new signup scheduling app on the website, and we also, you know, if people feel more comfortable, they're welcome to call and ask to be scheduled for certain shifts. And the great thing is that volunteers can choose between different jobs that they want to do at the food pantry. We have assigned jobs. Each has a slightly little different job description, so to speak, and people can choose the one that they're most comfortable in doing when they come to volunteer. I know that personally, for my husband and I, we've only been with the Lions for about a year, but the volunteer work that we've been doing at the food pantry has been really rewarding. It's so gratifying to see the families that we're helping and doing this, so we really urge people to consider helping us out. And if people want more information about how to volunteer, they can call our number, which is nine-seven-eight-six-six-zero-eight-zero-seven-four, or they can go to our website, which is www.lunenburglions.org, or they can go to our Facebook page. Follow us on Facebook and get some great information about that as well. So again, thank you for your time, we appreciate it. We thank you for the new location, and we're grateful to get the word out that we need more volunteers. Thank you.
I want to thank you and your organization, first of all, both of you, for presenting tonight, and through you, to your whole organization for all the work they do. They're very visible. If you go to any event in town, you know that the Lions are going to be there and, you know, throughout the year. So thank you, and to all your members. And the need for volunteers, yeah, it's needed everywhere, and I hope people listen and will help contribute not only, you know, food and money, but their time, which is just as much needed.
Exactly.
I also want to thank the town manager for working with your organization to make available that space, because it is a whole lot better suited than was the other, the other location with the stairs and not being able to get people up there, et cetera, so.
Very appreciative.
So thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes.
I figured that.
You shouldn't ask Mr. Jeffries if he has any question, just say
What are the questions? So first of all, thank you guys for the work that you do in our community, and as you, I'm sure it's very rewarding for you, and I have heard so many positive things about the people who've needed the support, so certainly it's great. I just have two questions tonight. The first is, how do you make a food donation to the Lions?
So right now, because we don't have a Dropbox or anything like that, someone would have to come to one of our open pantry sessions and leave food with us there. We've heard that a few donations have been left in the lobby of the school. We prefer that not happen because they don't want people coming in and out of that area of the school. So either come during our open sessions or call our phone number, and we can make an arrangement to meet up with you.
Okay. And then the second question is, you mentioned that right now you're servicing sixty walk-ins and roughly, I think I heard you say sixteen families regularly. Do you know or have any insight as to, are all of those families from Lunenburg, or are they also from the surrounding community?
Only Lunenburg. We serve Lunenburg families only.
Okay.
Yeah. Occasionally, we might get someone from out of town. We will serve them one time, and then we refer them to their local food pantry.
All right, thank you. And I don't have, obviously, you know, I'm sure you know I did some research in the Lions, but I did that years ago, so you guys are good.
Which preempted my comment about what do your executives make?
Nada. But I also, you know, welcome you guys to come down anytime and check it out. We'd love to show you around, so please, if you have time.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
No questions, just reiterate their kind words. Thank you for what you do and volunteering and putting yourself out there for the community.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Interviews. We have an appointment to a ZBA associate member, Mr. Donald Gurney of thirty-seven Riley Road, who's applying for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Welcome, welcome to the, well, premature welcome to the podium. Now, welcome to the podium.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, if you could just introduce yourself.
My name is Donald Gurney. I live at thirty-seven Riley Road, which is approximately half a mile west of the town center. I looked at the talent bank form. I've listened to solicitations for people to volunteer for various activities. I thought probably the zoning board of appeals was the most appropriate for me. I think the other entities might be the planning board or the finance committee, but I thought the ZBA was probably the, the most apt one. I've been a full-time resident of Lunenburg since July of twenty thirteen. Prior to that, I lived in Westchester County, New York, and worked in New York City. I'm a native of Applematics, Virginia, so I don't have a Bay State accent, as you may notice. I went to, I'm a graduate of the, of Tufts University in Medford, Massachusetts, and the University of Virginia School of Law in Charlottesville, Virginia. I'm admitted to practice in the Commonwealth of Virginia, the state of New York, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I'm currently in a retired or inactive status because I'm not currently engaged in the active practice of law. My career was mostly in New York City, practicing for forty-six years. My area of specialization is public finance, serving as bond counsel and counsel of the underwriters on debt offerings for states, cities, counties, towns, other governmental entities across the United States. As I mentioned before, I am retired from the practice of law. And my exposure to the ZBA is limited to one experience. In twenty fourteen, Gary Archer applied for a special permit to build a gas station, convenience store, and a car wash at the corner of Riley Road, where I live, and Massachusetts Avenue. I had the opportunity to speak before the ZBA and to write to the ZBA in opposition to the granting of the special permit. The, the vote of the ZBA at the time came down to be three votes in favor and two against, but fortunately, a supermajority is required in order to grant the special permit, so therefore, the special permit was denied. I hope I am able to learn a lot of our, the activities of the ZBA, but as an associate member, I would have that opportunity.
Have you gone to any of the meetings, aside from that twenty-four, I can't believe it was twenty-fourteen, by the way, so now I feel
I had to look at, I had to look at my notes to be sure.
I just can't believe it's eight years. But have you been to any ZBA meetings, either in person or virtually?
No, I have not.
Okay. Was, I'm assuming that the applicant's application was sent to the ZBA, right?
It was.
Did they provide any comment?
I did meet with the ZBA a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Did they provide anything? I don't see anything in the notes.
No.
Okay. I can see from your background why you would be, especially in public finance, and why you might be a good finance committee member, too. But we want to address that. We'll address this one right now, because ZBA is an important role, as your own experience indicates. It has very, it can be very impactful, their decisions, when, when items come up, and believe me when I tell you, items are coming up. Any questions from the board?
I have no questions, just thank you for coming forward, and I support this nomination.
Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, so you're eminently qualified, you have my support, and I'm gonna vote for you, but I have a couple of questions.
Okay, sure.
When it comes to, since you've moved into town and roughly nine years ago, what has this experience been like for you?
The experience of living in the town of Lunenburg? It's, it's a good experience. I, my wife has lived in Lunenburg since most of her life. I think she said she moved here in the fifth grade or so. I may be slightly off on that. So that's the reason for my living here primarily. It has been a good experience. I, Riley Road, of course, is the home of the Stone Farm Estates condominium, and, which is a fifty-five and over condominium with fifty-eight dwelling units. The final unit owned by the developer was sold at the end of September of twenty seventeen, which triggered a sixty-day period in which a board of trustees had to be elected by the unit owners. And at that time, I was elected to the board of trustees and then became president of the condominium, and I served in that capacity until December of twenty-twenty-one. So that's actually been a good experience working with a, you know, relatively large community in a, the early stages of unit owner control, making fairly major decisions with regard to the condominium. The first decision was hiring a property manager and negotiating a contract. The second decision was adopting a collections resolution under the Massachusetts Condominium Act. The third major item of business was receiving advice from an insurance expert and amending our declaration of trust to modernize the insurance provisions, to make them applicable to our condominium and to result in substantial cost savings on our insurance policies. The last major item I can think of is, we had people in the community who wanted us to revise our rules and regulations, and so we ended up amending and restating our rules and regulations, the extensive revisions, and I think the members of the board looked to the lawyer on the board to do most of the work. So I, I still have a good relationship with my office in New York, so I'm able to have them do a lot of the word processing that I'm not quite as competent to do.
All right, well, that answers, certainly you've answered my follow-up questions as well with that answer, so thank you very much.
I'm not sure I know what your follow-up questions were.
Must have known, because you answered them.
So thank you very much.
Mr. Franco, any questions?
I just want to say thank you for stepping up and, you know, under norm, for a normal candidate or applicant, I would feel better if you had actually attended some of the meetings that, for the, for the board you want to serve on, but yeah, I think that your experience more than compensates for that, so I'm comfortable, very comfortable, and thank you for stepping up.
I would entertain a motion then on the application of Mr. Donald Gurney for the ZBA associate position, term to expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Move to approve the appointment of Mr. Donald Gurney to the ZBA as an associate member, term to expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
I have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries? And aye for myself. At your earliest convenience, go to the town clerk to get sworn in before your next meeting, and then we will contact the chair, and you can contact the chair of the ZBA saying that you've been appointed, just so you know, to get on their mailing list for their next agendas and hearings.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck. Appointment to the council on aging, Jacqueline Dwyer, one-oh-five West Street.
That's incorrect. It's three-sixty-one Mulpus Road.
Three-sixty-one Mulpus, it just so happens we have a Dwyer on this board.
Yes, that is an incorrect address.
So what is it?
A three-sixty-one Mulpus Road.
Three-sixty-one Mulpus Road, just testing if you were awake, Mr. Dwyer. Term to expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Welcome.
Hello.
Same thing, introduce yourself and tell people why council on aging is the place for you.
I am Jacqueline Dwyer, three-sixty-one Mulpus Road, here in Lunenburg. I have prior service on the council of aging. I was there for, I believe, four years. Left because of grad school. I'm now done with grad school and would like to return.
Sounds good, and you, you, we got a note from the
Uh-oh.
Yeah, no, it's a good note. No, we, just like I asked about, we always ask the body who the applicant wants to join, if they've met with them. Obviously, you've met with them, you know many of them, but they haven't had a chance to vote. They were gonna vote on you at your, their next meeting, but according to the chair, I'm sure she has our endorsement, because I'm sure she knows that you were on the council before, so. I personally have no questions. I know you've been on the council before. I actually know you personally, so I think you'd be a great addition back on the board. Congratulations for fitting, for finishing grad school.
Thank you.
I'm assuming you've finished.
It's not complete. I have one more Zoom meeting I have to attend, but all my coursework is done, so.
Okay, good, all right. Well, just take that as an advance. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Your questions, Mr. Jeffries?
I don't have any.
What?
I don't hate to be like that.
And there's nobody here to see it. Holy cow.
There's plenty of people watching it, and someone's like, what? No, thank you, thank you very much for stepping up, and, you know, I do have a comment, but it's probably not good for television, so I'll save it for after the meeting.
All right, sounds good.
But no, thank you really for stepping up. This is obviously a board that's really important to me.
And to me.
So thank you.
So now I'll do the awkward question, if you have any comment, Mr. Dwyer.
For my own personal safety, since I'm married to Mrs. Dwyer, I have no comments.
Not even a good one, really? Wow.
I did ask him if he was gonna vote against me, just, you know, just to make it interesting.
Did he answer?
He said he was gonna abstain from commenting to me. I still don't know where he stands.
Mr. Franco, you're missing all this banter in person.
Yeah, well, I'm catching it on TV. It's captivating.
Fantastic.
I have no question. I have no questions, but I thank you for stepping forward, you know, and rejoining, you know, putting an application to rejoin. So thank you.
Okay. Well, I would entertain a motion regarding the application of Jacqueline Dwyer of 361 Mulpus Road. An appointment to the Council on Aging, term to expire June 30th, 2023.
I move to appoint Jacqueline Dwyer to the Council of Aging for a term to expire June 30th, 2023.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Excellent. Roll call vote, Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
I abstain.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
And an aye for me. By the way, I'm glad I'm remembering everybody's name tonight. I've had issues in the past where all of a sudden it's a complete blank because I'm used to, I turn to somebody and I'm like, yeah.
Just, just point and go, you, fella, you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, of course, get sworn in by the Town Clerk. And good luck on your new tenure on the, on the Council.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, now we have a few ratification of Town Manager appointments, so I will take it away, Miss, Madam Town Manager, regarding your ratification appointments.
Okay, do you want to take them separately in categories?
Sure, we can do, yeah, sure. Let's do them as they're bulleted here.
Okay. So the first two appointments are for two seasonal cemetery laborers. One is a returning employee from last summer. And the second employee is new, but she did interview for the position last year as well. So these both are being recommended to be ratified tonight.
And they are.
Alexis Diamond and Danielle Peterson.
Any questions about these two appointments from the Town Manager?
I have comments.
Go, comments away? Well, you have a question?
No.
Oh, you have a question.
Certainly, I am going to support all of these ratifications tonight, but the comment is to my fellow Board members that I find it difficult to ever say no to these without us having a policy for how we ratify. That, you know, a lot of these appointments, certainly, you know, the Town Manager has been great at all of her hires and all of her appointments. And there's no reason, I think, that the Town Manager has given us for us to have any cause for concern, that, that the previous pattern of hiring and selecting Greek people, that that's not going to continue. But I think by the Charter, we have a, you know, we're performing this duty of ratification. There should be some criteria by which we're following. And so I just urge that we, that at some point soon, that we take that up to develop some criteria. That's it.
Well, not, just to comment on your comment, or to respond to your comment, not on the applicant's and not on the, not on the Town Manager's appointments. What you said is the assumption that the Board would have about the Town Manager. If you started questioning the Town Manager's, whoever is in the role, their hires, then that would be a big flag other than their own appointments. I think that the way it is written is that the, the vetoing of a ratification is to be the exception. And that exception would happen if some information came to light to the Board. And this has happened in the past, not in the recent past, but in, you know, like 10 years ago, where we had gotten reports about somebody about to be hired that was unknown, either unknown to the Town Manager at the time, or was known and not disclosed, that came to light. But those are the exceptions. So that's how we would do it. I mean, otherwise, without any, any objection, we're not here to do the same kind of research about the candidates that, that the Town Manager did or her office did. So I think the policy is exactly what you stated, is that it should be almost a rubber stamp unless we have reason to believe otherwise.
Yeah, I think my comment is really that, you know, we have a name and we have a position. There's no opportunity to, to look, to consider anything else. So I think, from my perspective, I think this is kind of a pointless exercise that, that, you know, we should probably get rid of this ratification requirement if we're just confirming names and positions and we have no other information by which we can make an informed decision other than Town Manager's past experience. So I just think it would be a worthwhile cause to take up, to come up with some criteria, even if that criteria, whatever that criteria may be, but to establish some criteria for ratification. Because right now, there isn't one. And so there's really, unless someone in the public, you know, got, read our agenda that was posted on Thursday, so they got four days to find this thing out and come, bring something to our attention. But otherwise, if we don't personally know the people, there's, you know, there's nothing. And again, the Town Manager is certainly not a, I've said this several times, well, not several, I've said this to the Town Manager before, that we as a Board need to come up with some process because we really can't. To me, I can never say no. I can only say yes, so why even say anything? That's kind of where my perspective is.
Well, the authority to say no is the important part, and that's why, but it's a very, very large exception. And believe me when I tell you, the four days that this name comes up, it has happened in the past, that people have sent emails to the Board members saying, we really think you shouldn't do this. And at that point, we can flag it and say, you know what, we want to do more research on this person or not. But it's not to do, I mean, it's, we're not going to go through all the same paperwork that the Town Manager does and interview people ourselves and everything. That would just be.
I'm not suggesting that.
Okay, but then I don't know what criteria would be. If you can come up with criteria to bring to the Board, I'd be more than happy to look at it. But barring that, I don't know how we solve your problem of, okay, well, I don't know the people and therefore I feel obliged to say yes. I mean, it's the power in the, it's the authority that the power that Charter gives us to say no, that's the important part. I mean, the fact that we say yes most of the time is not a problem. It has not been a problem. So I think that the policy or lack of a policy thereof has not been an issue. And I, trying to solve something that's not an issue, I guess, is, doesn't seem to be appropriate. I mean, or necessary, I should say, not appropriate. Anyway, we can revisit it if you'd like.
I, I do have a question for Mr. Jeffries.
Sure.
If you have an issue with, with the process that we've been engaged in, because I agree, it is more or less a rubber stamp. Do you have something in mind for a remedy?
Yeah, I think that we should explore getting rid of this ratification process altogether. Because, you know, I think that if we, if we have to question the Town Manager's hiring selections for a lot of these roles, then someone's in the wrong position, right? And so I think we should be able to trust the Town Manager can hire seasonal lifeguards and can, and can hire seasonal cemetery laborers. Because we don't have any information about their qualifications at all, so there's nothing by which we can make an informed decision. It seems to me to be a kind of a fruitless exercise. So I would be in favor of getting rid of the ratification requirement altogether. But that's a Charter change. So in the absence of that, I think we should establish a policy of how we're going to proceed with them. And I think the remedy could very well be that we, that we blanket ratify everything until there's a Charter change. That, you know, that we just don't go through this, that they become effective 10 days after she appoints, and that we just don't act with them.
Well, you could do that now.
We could do that now. That's why I'm saying we should probably have a conversation about how we approach this. Because I mean, we're going to.
The only consideration I would say to that is it would hold up, if, if you didn't act on it, I would still have to weed out those 15 days and that would hold up hiring process for everyone, which are much-needed positions, obviously. You know, because, you know, we're getting ready for the cemetery, for example, you know, for Memorial Day.
Hopefully, we're not getting ready for the cemetery, but.
Getting ready for.
Getting the cemetery ready, yes.
Getting the cemetery ready, I'm sorry. Switched that.
Strike that. Mr. Franco?
Yeah, I just want to say that I like the idea of still keeping, I'm going to speak, I'm opposing Mr. Jeffries, Jeffries, Jeffries' recommendation that we just, you know, get rid of the ratification process. Because I, I do like the idea that there is that final gatekeeper and that final opportunity, as you described, Mr. Alonzo, of something does come to light. If everything is just an automatic ratification, there's no opportunity for that to happen. And while 99.5% of the nominations are going to be ratified almost automatically, I like the idea of that, that final process or that final opportunity for somebody to bring something to light and for the Board to consider it.
Okay, we can, we can take this up at another time, but everybody's comments are noted. So now we do have two before us for the Cemetery Laborers, Alexis Diamond and Danielle Peterson. So I'd entertain a motion on their ratification.
Move to ratify the Town Manager's appointments of seasonal cemetery laborers Alexis Diamond and Danielle Peterson.
I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries. Aye. I for myself. Civil Traffic Unit, Civil, Civilian Traffic Unit Position. That's easy for me to say.
Yes, there is actually a letter, and I'll read from the Police Chief. Dear Ms. Lemieux, as you're aware, the Civilian Traffic Unit was approved by the Personnel Committee on March 21st, 2022. As a result, we have two candidates that have applied for positions with the unit. First candidate is Paul Bezakis, who is a retired Deputy Chief from the Pittsburgh Police Department. Deputy Bezakis retired, served the City of Pittsburgh for over 30 years with distinction, retiring in 2017. Deputy Bezakis is currently an adjunct professor at Pittsburgh State University and has taught various training courses for the Municipal Police Training Committee. The second candidate is Tony Brennan, who is a retired sergeant from the Massachusetts Department of Correction. Sergeant Brennan, retired, served the Department of Corrections for over 30 years with distinction, retiring in 2022. Sergeant Brennan is also a reserve police officer with the Town of Townsend and the Town of Ashby, retiring from Townsend in 2021. Deputy Bezakis and Sergeant Brennan have both retired in good standing with their respective departments. They are currently certified to be a member of the Traffic Unit and have provided the required paperwork according to the policy, which has been submitted to Julie Bellabo. Respectfully request that Paul Bezakis and Tony Brennan be appointed to the Civilian Traffic Unit effective April 6, 2022.
Any comments or questions on these two? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion regarding their appointment as Civilian Traffic Unit Positions.
Joe moved.
Second.
Mr. Franco?
I have nothing to, in.
Roll, roll call vote, roll call vote.
Yes, yes, aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
And I for myself. Okay, Seasonal Beach Director and Seasonal Lifeguards.
I'm asking the Board to ratify the appointment of the Seasonal Beach Director, Elizabeth Simeoni, and Seasonal Lifeguards Paige Gangler, Ethan Gangler, Jared Bowser, and Nicholas Cornella, all who are returning employees from last season. Elizabeth is applied for the Beach Director position. Jen Nass is no longer, I guess she's retiring from being the Beach Director. She did not apply for the position. And so Elizabeth Simeoni is qualified to take that position.
That's the end of an era?
Yes.
Jen Nass has done that for a long time.
There'll be more appointments to come, but these were the first round that we received. They have been reviewed by the Parks Commission as well and recommended for appointment.
I know it's a little early in the season, but when is the Parks Commission thinking about making the beach open?
Around the close of school.
Gotcha. Okay, I entertain a motion regarding the Seasonal Beach Director and the Seasonal Lifeguards.
Move to ratify the appointment of the Seasonal Beach Director, Elizabeth Simeoni, and Seasonal Lifeguards Paige Gangler, Ethan Gangler, Jared Bowser, and Nicholas Cornella.
I have a second.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
I for myself. And last Town Manager Ratification Appointment, Van Driver.
Is for Kimberly Moore. And this appointment is being recommended to me from the HR Director, the Assistant Town Manager, and the Council on Aging Director, qualified to drive the van.
Okay. I would entertain a motion on the Van Driver Appointment.
Move to ratify the appointment of Van Driver Kimberly Moore.
I have a second.
Second.
On roll call, Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
And I for myself. Town Manager Report.
Announcement of existing vacancies. The following is a list of current vacancies on the following committees. There are two vacancies on the Architectural Preservation District Commission. There is one vacancy on the Economic Development Committee. And there are, there is one regular member vacancy and two associate vacancies on the Green Communities Committee and two vacancies on the Historical Commission. Anyone interested in serving any of these positions can complete the application form, which can be found on the Town website, complete it and return it to the Select Board's Office. And if you have any questions on these volunteer opportunities, you can also contact the Select Board's Office at 978-582-4130, extension 144.
As we did last year, I would recommend that we, for a town meeting, that the Town Moderator be given the vacancies and at the beginning of the meeting, announce them and have talent bank forms available there printed for people to fill out.
I'll do. Announcement of current employment opportunities for the Town. We have a Conservation Administration Administrator Position, which is a full-time benefited position. A Digital Service Staff Librarian Position, which is a part-time benefited position. Heavy Equipment Operator, which is a full-time benefited position. Seasonal Lifeguards, which are still openings for. Those are part-time, they're seasonal. The Trash and Recycling Coordinator, which is a part-time non-benefited position. Another position for a Van Driver, which is a part-time non-benefited position. And Videographer Positions, which are part-time non-benefited. And information on those job openings can be found on the Town website under Employment Opportunities. Update from Department Heads, from our Department Head Meeting. The, from the Police Chief, the Civilian Traffic Unit Position Description and Rate was approved by the Personnel Committee. And the Police Chief is working towards the development of a co-response team for mental health calls for service. Patrol Officers would partner with a mental health clinician when responding to individuals who are in crisis due to mental health or substance abuse issues. Mental health calls are also on the rise, he noted. There are now three reserve officers who have completed the Bridge Academy and that certifies them to the level of a full-time officer. For the Fire Department, the Fire Chief met with the state recently about the plan to get their paramedic licensure through the state. July 1st is the target date for getting our provisional paramedic license. The Library, the Director reported that it looks like the Digital Service Position will be hired shortly. The Director has been working on a library service and technology grant for a STEM sustainability program. The annual book sale that they have each year will be the first week of June and the Library is currently accepting donations. For land use, the Stone Farm property has been sold and divided into three parcels. The new owner is looking to open a marijuana social consumption, consumption business there at the building. The Economic Development Committee will be sending out a survey shortly. In other news, Powell will be tearing down their old garage and rebuilding a 12,000-square-foot garage that will require a water line expansion. In IT, Suzeart IT is holding cybersecurity trainings for staff on two dates. Public Access, PAC is looking to replace their remote switcher. I guess this is a more expensive piece of equipment for them, looking into that. Currently getting a new lighting trust system that will not be attached to the building. You know, their studio is at the TC Passio, so the structure does not at all attach to the flooring or anything that would be, get the asbestos, create an asbestos problem. And one of the Cable Managers projects is working with an A student on shooting video. And she's also getting ready to advertise the Production Technician Position. From the Treasure Collector, the Motor Vehicle Commitment Number One is complete and she's getting ready for the auditors who will be coming in June. She also reported on the results of the Tax Title Auction, which I've reported to the Board previously. From the Town Clerk, the 2020 Census has been finalized and the state redistricting has created new precincts that will be labeled B1 and C1. The annual town election will be the normal A through D precincts, but for state primaries and elections, it would include B1 and C1, which will mean that B1 and C1 would have to be in the cafeteria versus the gymnasium. It would be split, so they'll be running two different.
So there'll be six precincts in the state primaries and elections?
Yes.
Okay.
So those people that are, have, will be affected by this have been notified by the Town Clerk's Office.
Well, that. Well, that, that's going to be very interesting. That's going to be, that's going to be fun for the town clerk and the election officials to run that.
From the assessors, the assessors finished the personal property and real estate abatements last week. And the principal assessor is working on the cyclical data collection timeline. From the finance director, FY 21 audit will be issued shortly by Powers and Sullivan. And the finance director completed the final reporting on the CARES Act funding. From the Council on Aging, the director reported a new van driver will be starting soon. The Council on Aging, police and fire will be starting a new Lunenburg Elder Connections, which will be used to support the seniors. This new platform would be created by the designer of my senior center. And it will be used as a communication platform between the police-fire senior center and also now will include the Nishoba nursing and hospice as well. This will have vital information, so each of them will all basically be on the same page when it comes to what each of them are dealing with, different seniors. That could be important if they're going on a call to that residence or other types of situations. So good collaboration there. So I thank the Council on Aging Director and the police and fire chiefs for doing that. An update on the electricity and natural gas contracts for town and school accounts. Our energy broker solicited bids for the electricity and natural gas contracts. And for our natural gas, we locked into a three-year rate of $4.39 per decotherm. This is a decrease of about 80 cents or exactly 80 cents and equates to approximately $12,000 in savings. And that's based on our last 12 months of usage, which our broker also made, which is noteworthy. Our energy consumption has decreased in the last 12 months compared to previous years. So I was going to pass that along to the Green Communities Committee because I'm sure their efforts are a part of that reason why our energy use has declined. This will affect the DPW building, Ritter Town Hall, Eagle House, Turkey Hill, the middle school, high school, TC Passio's primary, and the library. For electricity, our electricity rates came in higher than the current municipal aggregation rate. So I am working with our municipal aggregation broker just to confirm that all our accounts can fall under that contract. Because if there are larger usage counts, it may be considered a large commercial type account. So should hear shortly on that. The response from Mass Housing on the 40B project eligibility site approval for Pondview Commons on Thursday, March 31st. Mass Housing emailed me a copy of the letter that they sent to Pondview Commons, notifying them that they reviewed the application and were issuing site approval. This approval is effective for a period of two years from the date of the letter. And if the applicant did not apply for a comprehensive permit through the ZBA within this period, the site approval would be expired unless Mass Housing extends the effective period in writing. A copy of the letter has been forwarded to all the appropriate officials in boards and committees. An update on COVID from the Board of Health. The total number of new cases reported as of March 26th was eight and the positivity rate was 1.38%. In other meetings, events, announcements, there will be a Veterans Informational Expo at the Eagle House on Tuesday, April 12th from 6:00 PM. And the veteran service officer worked with the Council on Aging to put this event together. Yard waste collection days at Young's Road will begin Saturday, starting April 16th until May 21st. And the collection is open 8:00 AM until 4:00 PM. The Lunenburg Lions Club will host an Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April 16th from 11:00 AM until 1:00 PM. And the sale between the TCP and the Kids Kingdom. There'll be face painting and light refreshments. And this is an event for Lunenburg residents only. The planning board will be holding their public hearing on the Three Articles for Town Meeting on April 11th at Town Hall at 6:05 PM. And the Lunenburg Farmers Market will start on Sunday, June 12th until Sunday, September 25th. The other thing I wanted to, I did notify the board on, but I just make that announcement, was we received a response from MRPC regarding our Unified Planning Work Program for the projects that we submitted. They approved two of the projects, the freight truck corridor analysis along Lemser Shirley Road and the intersection study of Chase Road and North Fields. But they did not include the intersection study of Electric Ave and West Street.
Any questions for the town manager?
No.
None. Okay. Full business. We signed the Conrad's Common Vittler's license already. Update on creating a senior tax relief program through a home rule petition. You want to give us an update on that or you want me to give you an update?
I can start and you can fill in. So we had a meeting, it was a week ago from last Thursday, so a little over a week. That was Chairman Alonso, Chairman Franco, the new principal assessor CJ Carroll, and Karen Broschu, the finance director and I. So we.
Mr. Franco's chairman now too?
No, did I say chairman? Sorry.
We're co-chairs.
Sleppin'. Franco, sorry. So we reviewed some different communities that have adopted a senior tax relief program. The criteria that they use. We talked about the senior circuit breaker and those thresholds and the different action steps that we're going to take going forward. The principal assessor is going to work on getting some data as far as what the possible impact is, given different thresholds of length of time that people have lived in the community 10 years or 15 years and merge that with data that he'll receive from the town clerk on age limits based on her residence list. So that is basically the first step where we can kind of see how many properties we're talking about and what the impact financially would be.
Lou, anything to add, Lou?
No, I think that covers it. I thought it was a good meeting and it was a great kickoff and I think that covers all the points. So thank you.
Yeah, I agree. As I mean, so for those who may not know, the overall goal of this program would be to provide property tax relief for seniors who meet certain criteria, both residency requirements, age requirements, and financial requirements, to provide property tax relief. And of course, that relief would be offset to them and it would be repositioned and absorbed by the rest of the town. But the goal is to help the seniors and to make any impact of that burden minimal to all the rest of the residents. And the data that we will collect after that first meeting that the town manager just said will be the starting off point so we can build kind of a spreadsheet model and see what different scenarios bring us so we can finally determine what the residency requirement would be. How many years you'd have to have been here, how old you have to be and what the financial needs are and how to determine that. We'll probably piggyback on existing state forms as we're really not going to be qualified to put together our own form. And the overhead to do that would be pretty sizable. So we're going to piggyback on state forms that provide similar abatements and breaks to seniors. So it was a very good meeting. And as soon as we hear back from the principal assessor, once that data is gathered, we'll have our second meeting and try to pull together the formula and start looking at the numbers. Okay. A discussion on fiscal year 2023 budget, capital plan, financial forecast. The annual town meeting, we're going to go through everything to make recommendations next, so let's leave that out. So anybody have any, is there anything to review on the fiscal year 2023 budget?
I did provide all the updates that have been done to the preliminary budget until this point as far as the adjustment worksheet. I don't know if there's any questions related to that. Basically, it reflects adjustments as far as the enterprise funds, those being added in. When the budget started out, it only reflected the indirect costs, not the operating costs of the enterprises. So it shows their direct costs for running the enterprise as well as the level of funding for the capital plan. It changes the appropriations. By increasing the unexpended capital amount, there was additional unexpended capital from previous years that could go towards the capital plan. So that decreased the amount that was needed from the free cash amount. Adjusted due to the amount available for funding through free cash. My recommendation is to increase the amount towards the special purpose stabilization fund to 450,000. And I think that was, that covers everything. Along the way, there's been, you know, money tax assessment, we've talked about that. That number was different than the Nishoba dispatch assessment was lower than the original estimate. So everything is reflected there that you'll vote on tonight.
Any questions about the budget adjustments? Okay, anything on the capital plan? There's no changes from last week, right?
No.
And financial forecast, any updates on that?
No.
Okay. Let's get everything else out of the way and we'll find, we'll finish with the warrants. So is there any warrants? No warrants?
No.
No minutes?
No.
Any action items?
Yes.
Mr. Jeffries?
Do we ever, did we get a communication back from the school committee about our request regarding Earth Day?
We did, and they did not have any community groups or groups within the school that stepped forward to do that.
Okay, that's unfortunate.
But the DPW Administrative Assistant is looking into making sure we have bags available that we can move forward with providing those bags where people can pick up and leave them at designated spots that the DPW can pick up at a later time.
Is there any kind of, what I'm wondering is if there's any kind of initiative, maybe this is a topic we can talk about next week on our agenda, is to try to just push some kind of communication out to encourage residents, you know, during school vacation week, Patriots Day, Earth Day, to try to do some roadside cleanup, you know, because we have so much pollution. Driving through town this past weekend, it's, it's almost sad, the amount of pollution that we have on the sides of the roads. And it seems like a lot of it is related to, it's, it seems, I'm making this correlation, it seems like a lot of it's recycling, like, like stuff that otherwise would be in a recyclable container. You know, I see it around my house, you know, see it driving down the road. So it just would be nice if we can kind of just encourage residents that maybe during this time before everything starts growing again, to be able to stop, you know, take an hour or two inside of the road near them and clean up what they can. And then the other thing about that is, so last year I was, I was heavily focused on Walmart and I was pretty upset about how disgusting the Walmart parking lot is and it's not any better. But I did get some good information that Walmart's not the people we should be contacting, that we should be calling Brickmore. So there is a number there that's on their sign because they're looking for space. But if you go into the Walmart Hannaford area and just look to your right or your left, it's pretty gross. You know, if you drive down Lancaster Ave, you get near, what is it, Goodrich Street, you start seeing plastic bags on the right hand, like big plastic bags on the right-hand side of the road. But even, going back to Walmart though, from Mass Ave, from the Walmart parking lot, I mean, it's, it's, it's really like beyond, beyond, you know? And it's, it's to the point that they have to see this every single day because it's just disgusting and it stands out. So, you know, I don't mind reaching out to Brickmore, but I think it may be helpful if we send a communication to them. Do we have any polluting littering laws on the books that we can enforce?
Well, certainly ones against littering.
Yeah, against litter.
But I don't know that, well, of course, but no one has ever seen littering. I think you're talking about, is there any ordinances that we can force people to clean up their property? I don't think there's anything like that. We don't have any kind of street beautification bylaw or something, you know, that requires you to clean up.
It would have to be to the extent that it would, Board of Health would be triggered or something.
Right.
Because I mean, you know, when you go and, when you look at a lot of, I'll talk about Walmart specifically because it's a lot of people that come in and out of there. But you look at that wetland area that they created, I mean, that whole thing is just filled with plastic. It's plastic bags, it's plastic cups. I mean, you know, if the idea is to encourage water to flow properly, we're clogging the systems. And this ties into our stormwater system that, you know, there's, there's a lot of, it really irks me, you know, that, that in the process of making, you know, I, I know how much Hannaford makes, but in the process of making millions of dollars on that hill every single month, that they just can't spend any time cleaning up the property.
I would concur.
That's it. That's my, that's my soapbox. I'm stepping off of that.
Any other action items or any of the other members? Committee reports. Mr. Franco, any committee reports?
I have not this time, thank you.
Mr. Dwyer?
I have no reports this week.
Mr. Jeffries?
I have one.
Yep.
On the building, Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee. So we met last, last night. And it was, I thought it was a very productive meeting, it was about two hours. So where we're at in this process is we're restarting with the new charge and kind of charting out our path ahead. So the meeting yesterday was focused on reviewing the, reviewing the programming, the space needs that were, that initially everyone has and then the space needs that were requested and that were put into the renovation plan. And so the discussion was somewhat of a familiarization with Christina and, and Peter Beidmore, our newest members, who weren't, who haven't been there as long to kind of bring them up to speed, as well as Tony, who's a member of the public, Tony Scullenbrini, who's a member of the public but who is certainly engaged in the process, which is very good. And we, in our, the meetings that we have are, the public can fully participate the entire time. So we do encourage public participation. It was a good meeting to talk about programming needs. What came out of the meeting were, you know, summarizing, what came out of the meeting were a couple of things that we're going to reach out about. I already talked to Heather, but I haven't sent her the official communication. So what stood out as we were going through the space needs was the amount of space that's, that's needed for storage. That's what stood out to everybody initially. And so it triggered several questions. And again, I have to forward them to the town manager. But the questions were along the lines of, is, is there a way to store this digitally? Any of these records that need to be stored long-term, can they be stored in a different format? That was one of the questions. Another question is, do they need to physically be stored here? Or can we send them off to Iron Mountain or something like that to be stored there for, at a, at a lower cost? So again, there's more than that, but that's the gist that the questions were about. Because I think we've identified that if there's another alternative to how we store stuff, it's going to decrease our overall need and we're building prime real estate to store stuff. The conversation, there was also a question that was going to go to the school department from Brian Leighton. And that question is regarding the after-school program. And the question is generally, assuming that the TC Passios is no longer available for the after-school program, how can the schools accommodate? And it's to get a better understanding of what their limitations are or not. Because that's another area where I think that the general sentiment from members is this is space that's used for four hours a day. This is a really prime realist money we're going to be spending on it. And is there a way to meet that need somewhere else? So at our next meeting, I think we're going to, we're going to pick that up. We're also going to review a handout that we're going to provide this year at town meeting. We're looking to provide a handout instead of giving an update on generally where we're at. And then the next part of this is, is, you know, initially, like I said, just reviewing the program and we're going through all the studies and coming up with all the recommendations that have been made. So we already had work groups that, that have done this. We just didn't have enough time yesterday to do this in the meeting. So I'm going to do a compilation, send it back out to everyone. But generally, we broke up into work groups to look at the TAPA, all the TAPA reports, all the VERTEX reports to record what all the recommendations were. And then I went through, with the town manager's support, I went through the, all of our town meetings, all of the capital plans that last over years, to identify what we've identified that needs to be done, what we've already programmed in. that needs to be done, what we've already programmed in. And so then we're going to have kind of, and what this will do for us is provide a baseline knowing that if we do anything in this building, we have to do this much stuff. And that way, we make sure we incorporate that into cost estimates and plans. But more to come. We're not, we don't have another meeting in the month of April. I think many of us on other boards, so the plan is to kind of focus on town meeting, and then we'll meet again the week of town meeting.
Excellent. Thank you. Senior tax relief program, Lou and I were on, so we gave you the review or the update on that. And the finance committee had their public hearing last Thursday. It's on Lunenburg Access YouTube, where they went through all the articles that we're about to go through right now. Because this goes off to print tomorrow, right?
This week, yep.
This week. So, so without further ado, in order to streamline this, we want to look at the draft warrant. And we'll go article by article. I'll just say what article it is. And if anybody wants to talk about it, feel free to, you know, just talk instead of, just trying to streamline this because we have, what is there, how many?
Thirty.
Thirty, okay. So we can spend as little or as much time as anybody wants, but I just want to keep the conversation going. So without further ado, Article One, about reading, will the town vote to read, to hear and accept the regular written reports of the town offices and committees? If there is no discussion, I would entertain a motion about an article.
You're looking for us to make a recommendation?
Yes.
I recommend the board recommend approval for, I move for the board to recommend approval for Article One.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Aye for me. So Board, Select Board recommendation is approval, recommend approval. Number two is all of our revolving funds regarding Section 53E and a half, which includes ambulance billing revolving fund, timber rights, school custodial special details, green thumb, library revolving, council on aging and MART revolving together, stormwater task force, electric, gas, plumbing inspector revolving funds and technology. Are any of these being increased or are they the same as?
The same as last.
So these are all the same as last year?
I move to recommend approval.
Go a second.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Aye for myself. Article three, paying prior year expenses. What is the, what is the number we're looking at?
Five hundred dollars. It's all the known numbers are in the index.
Oh, in the summary, okay. Well, that means I got to keep going back and forth. So if you have the summary, if you have it here, that's good.
Yep.
All right, so five hundred and what?
Five hundred dollars.
Five hundred dollars for a prior year expense.
I move for the board to recommend approval of Article Three.
Second.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye for me.
Article four.
Defer.
Uh.
Second.
Whoa, whoa.
Defer.
We have.
We have all the numbers.
Yep.
This is FY twenty-two budget. So any adjustments to the FY twenty-two budget?
That's for the snow and ice. Covers all the snow and ice deficits by transferring funds out of various accounts that there's, would be surpluses in, and as well as transferring funds into the salary reserve to fund the next article fully, within this year's appropriation.
Right, so it's totally within the budget.
Totally within the budget.
So it's just moving line items around.
Where is that at?
It says Article Four. It's in the annual town meeting warrant documents.
Article Four, budget adjustments.
Yes.
Okay.
So we are moving, just so people at home can follow, we are going to be moving money from liability insurance, workers' compensation, group health insurance, reserve fund, and unemployment compensation. And those four, five totals will be moved into salary reserve fund and snow removal. And that will be a balanced budget, again, just by line item transfers. So what is the recommendation of the board?
I move to recommend approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr., well, not all in favor, just roll call vote. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Aye for me, unanimous again. Number five, the collective bargaining agreement with the municipal employee, employees' union.
I move to recommend approval of Article Five.
Second.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Aye for myself.
Are we doing this the way you expected, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Mr. Franco's remote presence prevents me from just saying all those in favor, so I have to do a roll call, so.
Sorry.
No, it's all in the report, Mr. Franco, don't worry. Article six, the capital plan. The cap, okay. So the capital plan as presented to, by the town manager?
All right, I move to recommend approval of Article Six.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Before I go, I hadn't recalled this, but what is the finance committee waiting for? Why are they deferring this? What, what information don't they have, like that's been known for?
Uh, there's some discussion about whether the, and they've asked for town council's opinion on whether they can pull out projects from, so basically amend the capital plan after the original motions made.
There's a couple items that they, as a group, have some concerns about.
Okay.
I would say not every member has a concern about.
But some.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. My understanding of the way the capital plan works is that people can change the number, they don't get to select what projects get funded.
And that's what council is going to provide a written opinion.
Does he agree with that opinion, even though it's not written yet?
Um, I, I haven't yet read it, so I.
All right, that's fine. All right, well, we have a motion to approve. And second, Mr. Franco?
Yeah, I'm curious, this is the finance committee's issue, but I, I say aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. This is what Mr. Beardmore was talking about this evening, about Article Seven. This is the administrative organization plan. Everybody, has everybody received that?
Yeah.
And reviewed that?
Could we talk about this one for a second?
Absolutely. We can talk about any of these as long as you'd like.
So first, I want to say that to the town manager, I think the town manager did a really good job putting together the, the job description for the position. And I know that, I cert, I had the opportunity as well to make some recommendations, given my experience in the field. And, and they were all accepted and incorporated. And I think that the, the job, the rationale for this and the, and the criteria of skills that are looked, that are being sought, I think are excellent and will certainly put the town in a better position. To Mr. Beardmore's point, you know, he and I have had several conversations about this. And, and I've been, as everyone hopefully knows, emphatic about my support for the creation of this role, and also for the consolidation of the two departments. The school committee, though, is, has a very specific charge in the charter that cannot be ignored. And there's two real big parts of their charge. And one of them is the facilities of the schools. And unlike, you know, everyone else, you know, they have really specific language that says that they are responsible for their facilities by the charter. So we can't move into a combination of these roles unless we have the school committee fully on board with that. That has to be their vote, has to be their decision, and, and they have to be in agreement with us. It seems as though, based on my conversations with, with the town manager and some conversations with the superintendent, that the town has a lot of needs. And in my opinion, based on my own experience working in this field, I think that the best approach is for the town to hire someone into this role separate from the schools. I think the job description is, is robust enough to be able to transition at a future point to being slightly bigger than it already is. But the job description already accounts for there being coordination with the schools, accounts for there being this cohesive kind of vision. And I think that it would be in the school's best interest to not hire a similar, similar skill set, that they don't need to go to the level that we're going to on this position. And if they take that route, then I think that overall, we will find ourselves in eighteen months, twenty-four months, in a position where we could be able to combine them. But I don't, personally, professionally, I don't think that it would be wise at this point to combine them. I think the schools, for them, it would be a loss in capability for probably the first year, while the person's brought up to speed and has a better understanding of town facilities. So I think that the approach the town manager is taking is appropriate. I think the, the real responsibility here is, is on the schools and their willingness, school committee, and their willingness to, to do this. So perhaps we should discuss this, but I am wholeheartedly in favor of Article Seven.
You have any comments?
I don't.
Mr. Franco, any comments?
No, I don't.
I will comment from a historical perspective. First of all, I agree with everything Mr. Jeffries just said. It clearly is in the charter. I can say that in my tenure here in public service in town, I have seen positions try to umbrella both the town and the school departments. I've seen it in IT, I've seen it in the facilities. So there was a time when facilities was under one person, and it was a shared responsibility between the town properties and the school properties, if there is any such distinction. But obviously, there are things that are under the umbrella of the school committee and things under the umbrella of the Board of Selectmen, now Select Board. In all those times, eventually, one of the sides, who usually co-share the revenue or the expenditure, feels short-changed, like the person who's supposed to be covering both inevitably feels like they're, one department feels like they're covering more of the, than the other. And that is always a source of tension, that's why they were, that's why the facilities was, was shifted. I mean, it was put under the DPW and the, the school, when Mr. Londa was here, and he was the facilities director for the entire town, eventually went to the school, solely to the school. With that in mind, I am one hundred percent behind this, the town manager's organizational, reorganizational, in the administration and the inclusion or the addition of a facilities director. If it were such that the school committee would agree to try to try it again, I would be, I would be willing to try it. But I believe that the town manager has reached out to the school and they have determined for their best interest that they would just rather fill the position that is now vacant and keep that separation. I can honor that too, I respect that decision. And as such, I see that, I think this is a good way to go for us. I think it fills a void that Mr. Jeffries has pointed out pretty continuously or continually, whichever one is the proper word in this time. But I think it's a need that we have to fulfill, especially as we've gone through the municipal buildings and the, and the TCP design thing, the thirty school street. It's very clear, we need an overall status of our buildings and what needs to be done to them. And that has been a secondary job of the DPW because they've been tasked with so many other departments. So yes, I would totally support this article. As such, yes.
I move to recommend, emphatically recommend approval.
We're not going to put the word emphatically. I think, I think if we're unanimous, it'll be pretty emphatic. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Franco?
Emphatic aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
And Mr. Jeffries?
Emphatic aye too.
I think an aye will suffice on my side, so two emphatic ayes and two ayes. Okay, Article Eight, that is the budget. So the FY twenty-three budget as presented, including the adjustments that are in our drive for tonight.
I move to recommend approval of Article Eight.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Article Nine, transferring?
One hundred thousand.
One hundred thousand dollars to the stabilization fund.
Recommend approval of Article Nine.
Second.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And aye for myself. Article Ten, putting special, money into the special purpose stabilization fund in the amount of?
Four hundred and fifty thousand.
Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Obviously, we like the special purpose stabilization fund better than the stabilization fund.
Just keep going down.
Yes.
I recommend approval of Article Ten.
Second.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And aye for myself. Again, if, if anybody wants to discuss any of these, please do, just speak up. Article Eleven, to put money into the OPEB trust fund in the amount of?
Two hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and six hundred and fifty-six dollars from the sewer retained earnings.
I move to recommend approval of Article, to recommend approval of Article Eleven.
Second.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Aye for myself. Article Twelve is appropriating the money to fund the sewer enterprise fund, or money to operate the sewer enterprise fund, so.
And the amount of this is one million, two hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars?
Correct.
I move to recommend approval of Article Twelve.
Second.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And aye for myself. Tension's building if we're going to get anything other than an unanimous vote, I'm telling you. We're halfway through almost. Transferring available funds of thirty-five thousand, five hundred, forty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents into the sewer capital reserve stabilization fund.
I move to recommend approval of Article Thirteen.
Second.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Aye for myself. Article Fourteen, funding a sum of money to operate the solid waste disposal program enterprise fund.
I have a question.
First of all, what's the amount?
Three hundred and two thousand.
Three hundred and two thousand.
Same as, same as this year.
Since we're just, do we have, do we have any ideas to, the effectiveness of the senior bag program that we, someone initiated? In other words, have seniors been taking the bags that were provided to the senior center? This has triggered the question, but if we don't know the answer, we can come back to it.
We have to find out from the council on aging director.
Okay. I, I move to recommend approval of Article Fourteen.
Second.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And aye for myself. Article Fifteen, to transfer or appropriate available funds of a sum of money to operate the water enterprise fund in the amount of?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
I move to recommend approval of Article Fifteen.
Second.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Eye. I should remember already's my name by the end of this night, I'm telling you. Uh, Article Sixteen, to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to fund the Public Education and Government Access Enterprise Operating Fund. That's PAC.
Hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Thank you.
Sixty-seven.
Hundred, thank you. Five hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Hold it, say, say it.
One hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Thank you.
I move to recommend approval of Article Sixteen.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an eye for myself. Article Seventeen, if the town will appropriate the sum of ten thousand dollars from the sale of cemetery lots to be used for the care and improvement and embellishment of the town cemeteries.
I have a question on Seventeen, I'm not sure how broad this is, but, so, I was recently made aware of the installation by the cemetery commissioners of what looks to be headstones on private property. Are you also aware of this, town manager?
Yeah, it's a memorial, um, I believe, was installed on private property, yes.
Is that a normal, acceptable use of these funds?
I'm looking into that.
Okay. I defer. I would like to defer Article Seventeen.
Second.
What, what are we deferring to?
I, I want to, I'd like to get a little more information about that particular question. You know, I, if, I don't, I don't know the straight answer to that, but I would be a little concerned if, if we just, um...
Well, the sale of cemetery lots would have no other place to go. I mean, if what they did as far as this memorial, in, in the course of the investigation, turned out to be an inappropriate use of funds, there will be a determination on that. I don't think that you held this article of ten thousand dollars of selling cemetery lots, which clearly should be going to the cemetery care, hostage over that article. I just don't see the connection. I understand what you're trying to do, I just think there are other avenues that we can go to.
Okay, um...
We're not rec, we're, we're not holding anything hostage, we're just deferring our opinion to town meeting.
Alright, alright, that's fine. I think we're gonna get the answer to my question now. Alright, so, we have a, we have a motion to defer and a second. Mr. Franco?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I'm kinda with you on this, Mr. Alonzo, but I will, um, I will say aye to this, because I see no harm in deferring it, so...
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
And Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And a no from me.
Our first one.
And it was on a deferral, it's not even a, not even a recommend disapproval, so... Alright, uh, Article Eighteen, to use a certain amount of money in the amount of?
Hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred thousand dollars, to, uh, remove and dispose of solid waste materials and restore the work area to prior natural conditions at the property known as the Woodruff Property, which is under the conservation, uh, on the Conservation Committee's care.
I move to recommend approval of Article Eighteen.
Do you have a second? Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an eye for myself. Article Nineteen, to, uh, vote, to fund, fund the sum of money for the demolition of the building at the property known as the old Primary School Thirty, School Street, and for final engineering and design services to create a passive recreation open space at this area, including all costs related or incidental thereto, in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I move to recommend approval of Article Nineteen.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an eye for myself. Uh, Article Twenty is the amendment of the Salary Admin Plan. Now, this is to just adding positions as grades?
Right, that they've already, the Personnel Committee has already approved.
Okay, okay, so this is adding a, a, there'll be a schedule that'll show the different positions and the different grades and changes of certain grades of certain positions. This is not salary oriented by, say, it's just changing the grades and adding some positions in there.
I had a question on that Salary Admin Plan to the town manager. I noticed that, uh, step, uh, Grade One paid like fourteen dollars an hour, fourteen, twenty-five, or something like that. Who qualifies for Grade One and Grade Two?
The, uh, library page, I think is one of the only positions in Grade One.
And the beach, I'm guessing they make more than?
Yeah, the lifeguards are Grade Three, I think.
Okay, which was, I think, like sixteen dollars or something.
I think, but, I think your question is about Article Twenty-One, not Twenty.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, we're ahead of us.
I recommend approval of Article Twenty. I move to recommend approval of Article Twenty.
Second.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Eye for myself. Now, we come to the actual salary schedule. And I have not had a chance to review this myself. Has anybody else had a chance to review this?
Not.
No, so I would recommend a deferral, and I've asked the town manager to provide the current one, not only the existing one, so we can see the difference.
Okay. I move to recommend a deferral of Article Twenty-One.
Do you have a second? Okay. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an eye for myself. Article Twenty-Two. What is exactly this doing?
This is, they, uh, the Personnel Committee underwent a review of the entire bylaw. They were provided, uh, recommendations from our Labor Council, Mark Terry. Uh, so they went through, um, the complete bylaw, um, which the board, um, has a copy of after they finalized last week, so you may not have had time to review the whole thing.
So, I'm gonna go with deferral here.
Okay.
That's what I would recommend.
Yep, I move, move to defer Article Twenty-Two.
Second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an eye for myself. Article Twen, uh, so may, so those are the two things we have to review, those two plans. That document and then these, their salary plan. Article Twenty-Three is the creation of a special committee regarding the observance of the three-hundredth anniversary of the Town of Lunenburg, which will be coming up in twenty-twenty-eight. So, this will give them five years to plan, uh, and the sum of money is?
That is to be decided, so that's something that has to be discussed tonight and, uh, decided for this article. I would recommend a sum of, like, ten thousand dollars just to initially start them off, I think that's...
That might even be high, I think five thousand is fine. I mean, they're gonna have to, it's to organize and get things done, they can always come back at that point, I don't know how they're gonna spend five thousand dollars in a year as they're organizing, but they're gonna need the money later on. So, that'll get them kick-started, I think.
Five thousand?
Yep. Is that, is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
And that would be reason appropriate, so...
I move to recommend approval of Article Twenty-Three, and adding in the language five thousand dollars.
Second.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an eye for myself. Article Twenty-Three is the general bylaws, where basically, uh, Twenty-Four, sorry, uh, that any, all references to select, select man, select men, and Board of Selectmen are all changed to Select Board Member, Select Board, and Select Board, respectively. There were very few substantive changes, they're deleting the Computer Advisory Committee, which has, has not been in effect in probably at least ten years. Some minor changes to boards and commission sentences. I didn't see anything major in any of these, some spelling corrections. These are all available on the, uh, these are all on the website, right?
I put it up on the website tonight.
Yep, so we've all, so I'll, I'll attend a motion by the board here.
Well, I, I, I'm not in favor of this approval. Um, I'm gonna vote against it tonight, I'll vote against it at town meeting. I think that, I think that my expectation of a five-year bylaw review is that every five years, the committee, in my opinion, should make the effort to come before the boards with whatever changes that they have. I know that participation has been very low in terms of anyone coming to their, their meetings, but I think that the, the aspect of this also has to be the other way, where there, there's, in my opinion, should be some outreach, active outreach to the boards about the changes that are proposed. I, first time I read these was the other day, of what was even suggested, and, and we really never seriously ever had a conversation about our, the bylaws that pertains to us with any other changes that we can make. I did have this conversation with the members of the, um, the Chair of the Bylaw Review Committee, and I think their perspective was that participation was low, and also that committees can always at any time make changes to their bylaws, and that it doesn't need to be part of this process. You know, my concern is that, you know, if, you know, we just changed the charter a couple of years ago, we really need to be a little more deliberative, in my opinion, during this five-year review, and not save this for the next time we change the charter again. So, I, I'm not in favor of it, I think that, I think we need to spend a couple more months on this, and I think we're not ready for primetime, but...
I would ask, I would just ask one question, and that is, are you against the changes they're making, or you're just saying it wasn't extensive enough?
I, I'm not against the changes that they're making, I don't think they were extensive enough. There were a couple minor issues I saw in, in, in the Select Board section, there were a few minor problems that we'll have to correct, um, but it's kinda too late in the game to correct them, so, that's what, you know, so I'm not in favor of it, but I'll, certainly, I don't wanna make the motion.
Well, I don't disagree with your sentiment that the bylaws need more work than what's been put in, but I also, um, think the very modest changes that they made here are, are valid. So, I will make the motion to recommend approval of Article Twenty-Four.
Do you have a second?
Let, let me just ask a question, would, would you be?
I'll second for discussion.
Mr. Jeffries, would you be open to deferring?
I would, I would be open to deferring, and I think that that may give me a little bit more time to kinda comb through this, and, and I might be, I should be more informed by May.
So, could I?
But my intention tonight, as, as I stand today, I don't, I don't think that I'm in, I'm not in support of this, as I stand today, I would vote against it, but I do recognize that I think I could have a couple of conversations with a few committee members, and I may change my opinion. So, more time would be helpful to me.
So mechanically, like, how does this work logistically? Would you withdraw the initial motion?
Well, I'm not gonna get a second, then it goes nowhere.
Well, we haven't, yeah, he did second it, first of all, and I would have seconded.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, I'm just interested, go ahead, Mr. Franco.
Well, I, I, I guess what I'm saying is that, I, maybe I'm, I'm thinking that, he made a motion not to approve it, I'm making a motion to...
No, 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 Mr. Jeffries voiced an opinion that he didn't go, that he would not approve it, but he refused to make a motion, Mr. Dwyer made a motion to approve.
So, the motion is to approve?
Mr. Jeffries' comment was a comment, it wasn't a motion.
Yeah, right, 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 no, you're correct, I, right, I got a little lost there. Let me ask, for purposes of discussion, would Mr. Dwyer be open to deferring?
I don't have an issue with deferring, I, I, I changed my motion to, instead of recommend approval, recommend deferral.
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
I'm not gonna buck this one, I mean, I'm fine, for the record, I vote aye for the deferral, but I'll also add that, I, I, I mean, the changes, I, I don't disagree necessarily with Mr. Jeffries' objections, I, I think it could have been more thorough. I think also, in two years of pandemic, it's probably not a great time to do this review, so it was a little bad timing, but I'm not against any of the changes, so there's nothing that would prevent me from voting for this at town meeting to get these changes made. They're not, they're not making any changes that I object to, there may be other ones that I would include, but we can always go back and include them at some other time, so, that would be my, my feeling there, but we can, we can give more time here. Article Twenty-Five is the sewer bylaw change, so, I would like, personally, I'd like to defer this, 'cause I have not really had the time to read it in its entirety, and I'd like to get some opinions and maybe attend the sewer commission, what, have they had their public hearing yet?
Uh, no.
So, I'd like to find out from them, uh, what the intent is of this, we, we did get a, I did have a question that town council responded to, everybody saw the response
No, I don't think they have to have a public hearing, because, um, only the zoning does.
Oh, okay. Well, maybe I'll just go to their meeting and just try to get some information, that's all.
The, I did forward town councils?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I just mentioned that, yep, so...
I move to, I rec, I move to recommend deferral.
Second.
I move to defer.
Move to defer, the recommendation to town meeting, right. Mr. Jeff, uh, Mr. Franco?
Was there a second on that, that was seconded?
It was seconded, yes.
Uh, yeah, aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an eye for myself. Uh, the Water Supply Protection District, this is, um... Who submitted this?
I think it was Twenty-Six.
Twenty, no, that's, that...
Twenty-Six is planning, or...
Twenty-Six, Twenty-Six is planning, okay.
Twenty-Six, Twenty-Seven, Twenty-Eight are planning.
Yes, okay, they're all planning, okay. Uh, so Twenty-Six is adding a section in the protective bylaw that is entitled non-medical marijuana establishments, and, uh, it has to do with the special permitting procedure.
I can give a explanation provided to me through the land use director.
Yep.
The genesis of this amendment was a legal opinion submitted by Uma Flowers. This section, which is part of the submission requirements, was originally written with the intent of having the applicant submit a provisional license from the CCC. It has been alleged that the wording as written does not mandate that requirement. The Planning Board requested that town council review this section and make any, any necessary amendments. Town council has proposed language in the amendment to clarify the intended requirement, although he's unwilling to concede that the current language is not sufficient to mandate the submission of, of a provisional license. This is clarification.
So, I think, as it stands, as it stands now, it has been our practice that they have to clear the common, the state's marijuana establishment...
To get a provisional license, not their final license.
To get the provisional license before they can come to us for a host community agreement. Like, that is a serial process, and they're changing it to a parallel process. 'Cause it says in, in the, in the, what they're substituting in the middle of the paragraph, it says licensure by the Commonwealth is not a prerequisite to application submittal. So, that means they can apply to us for this while they're in process with the state?
No, they, what the process refers to is the special permit procedure, so, they can go, you know, we can, ish, uh, the Board of Selectmen, Select Board can sign a HCA with them, but they still have to get their provisional license before going to the Planning Board for the special permit.
I think the wording that, I mean, I, I wanna support the Planning Board, but I, I think the wording, I think town council's correct, that the wording in the first version, to me, is clear. I think the second version is not very clear, what's being proposed. I think it's more legally clear, probably, but I think the common read, the common person, it's not gonna make more sense.
Okay, we obviously have a discussion, let's hear from the Planning Board, so we'll do, I, I would probably, it seems to be, would you like to weigh in?
No, I think we should defer.
Okay, there you go. Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Franco, would you like to comment, or otherwise you can vote?
No, I, I, I agree with deferring this, so, um, I'm ready to vote, so aye.
Mr. Dwyer? Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Eye for myself, so deferred.
The next two Planning Board articles relate to the Water Supply Protection District. The next two Planning Board articles relate to the Water Supply Protection District.
Now, is this one that they issued, they, they put forward last time and then rescinded because there was some changes in the language they wanted?
I believe so.
This is just re-providing what the district is, including some updates from, from the Water District, right?
Right.
Okay.
Newly drawn maps, cause that relates to the increase in the amount of water the district is permitted to withdraw.
Right. Yeah, I'm perfectly fine with this. I think it was withdrawn last time because there was some, some change on the map that wasn't completed, that they wanted, the state wanted us to do some certain things that were not on that map.
I move to recommend approval of Article twenty-seven.
Second.
Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. And this is the location of districts, which basically just talks about that and then change, updates the date.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
Move to recommend approval of Article twenty-eight.
Second.
Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Oh, this one's back. So this is to amend the sewer service area by adding the remaining acreage for the parcel minus five Chestnut Street to the sewer service area. This was on last years or last special town meeting, was it last year? Well, one of the, one of the, one of the last years' town meetings and this was, this is a citizen's petition.
Has the Sewer Commission weighed in on this?
They did not, as a group, weigh in.
Well, it's a citizen's petition, so I don't think they've had an opportunity. So I'm gonna defer to this.
I'd like to defer.
Okay, so make a motion?
Move to defer Article twenty-nine.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. And now I'm reading this one for the first time, this has to be a citizen petition, oh yeah. This is to see if the town will vote to adopt the following resolution in support of changing the state flag and seal of Massachusetts. Has anybody seen this before?
Reading the notes, but I mean, I think this is, I'm not in favor of this.
Well, so, I think just, just for the record, I really feel I should read this into the record.
I'd be willing to defer to see the presentation.
Oh, yeah, no, no, yeah, I think, I think we're heading, we're heading there, but I want, I want people to, because they've not heard this before and I'm gonna read this into the record. So this is a citizen petition, this is the last article on the warrant, and it is called "The Resolution in Support of Changing the State Flag and Seal of Massachusetts," and it reads as follows. Whereas the history of Massachusetts is replete with instances of conflict between the European colonists and the native nations of the region who first extended the hand of friendship to the colonists on their shores in 1620 and helped them to survive starvation during the setless first winters on their land, whereas members of the native nation for who the state of Massachusetts is named were ambushed and killed by Miles Standish, first commander of the British, of the Plymouth Colony in April of 1623, barely two years after the pilgrims arrived on their shores. Whereas the colonial broadsword brandished above the head of the native man on the Massachusetts state flag and seal is modeled after Miles Standish's own broadsword, borrowed for that purpose from the Pilgrim Hall in Plymouth by the illustrator Edmund Garrett in 1884. Whereas the belt binding the natives' cloak on the flag and seal is modeled after a belt worn by Metacomet, known as, to the English as King Philip, who was among the Wampanoag leaders who resorted to a mutually destructive war in 1675 to 76 in defense of native lands against colonial encroachment. Whereas the proportions of the body of the native man in the flag and seal were modeled from a native skeleton kept in Winthrop, the bow modeled after a bow taken from a native man shot and killed by a colonist in Sudbury in 1663, and his facial features taken from a photograph of an Ojibwe chief from Great Falls, Montana, considered by the illustrator to be a quote "fine specimen of an Indian, though not from Massachusetts." Whereas the history of relations between the Massachusetts since colonial times and the native nations who continue to live within its borders includes the forced internment of thousands of so-called quote "preying Indians" unquote on Deer Island and Boston Harbor, where they died by the hundreds of exposure in 1675, their subsequent enslavement in Boston, Bermuda and the Caribbean Islands, the offering of forty pounds sterling as bounty for the scalps of native men, women and children in Massachusetts beginning in 1686, increased to a hundred pounds sterling for the scalps of native adult males by 1722, half that amount for native women and children. Whereas Native Americans were legally prohibited from even stepping foot into Boston from 1675 until 2004, when that law was finally repealed. Whereas the four-hundredth anniversary of the landing of the colonists at Plymouth Plantation in the year 2020 afforded every citizen of the Commonwealth a chance to reflect upon this history and came to an awareness of the possibility of a better relationship between the descendants of the colonial immigrants and the native nations of the Commonwealth. Whereas Native Americans have long suffered the abuses of racism, the appropriation of their symbols for public schools and sports teams, the loss of their ancestral lands and the encroachment of their cultural life ways. Whereas the area now known as the town of Lunenburg shares a rich native history with modern-day tribal nations who inhabited this area long before the first colonial settlers arrived circa 1718, such as the Abenaki and the Nipmuck. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Lunenburg hereby adopts this resolution in support of the work of the Special Commission relative to the seal and motto of the Commonwealth established by a resolve of the General Court in 2020 and appointed by the Governor to recommend changes to the current flag and seal of Massachusetts and in support of a new seal and motto for the Commonwealth that may better reflect our aspirations for harmonious, respectful relations between all people who now call Massachusetts home. The town clerk shall forward a copy of this resolution to Senator Mark Pacheco and Representative Antonio Cabral, co-chairs of the Joint Committee on State Administration, who serve as members of the Special Commission relative to the seal and motto of the Commonwealth, and to Senator John Cronin, Representative Michael Kishmerick and Representative Danilo Sina, with the request that they support the work of the aforementioned Special Commission.
I'd like to talk about it.
Sure.
You know, I, I'm, I'm not in favor of this. I think we should, even before a presentation, I'm of the opinion that we should recommend disapproval. I think that, you know, there are historical wrongs that have lingering effects onto the modern day and, and there are, and there are, and as an African American, I can point to quite a few, but, you know, there's, there's a point where this doesn't identify anything. This, this doesn't identify any lingering effect onto the modern day from atrocious wrongs that have happened in the past and I, and I understand that we're in this era where we're trying to like reconcile the past and apologize for what happened, you know, hundreds of years ago and make better on how we move forward, but I, I, I'm not of that ilk and I, I'm of, I'm of the belief that we have to, you know, work with what we have today and today I've never met one person in my life who said anything negative about a Native American. I'm not aware of any act of discrimination in our area against Native Americans. I'm not even aware that this is a real issue. I don't wanna minimize the struggles that exist that I may just simply be unaware of, but changing our state seal because it was modeled after someone who didn't live in Massachusetts and the, and the spear that I'm sure thousands of people have used was similar to a spear that kilted somebody four hundred years ago, to me is wholly irrelevant. I mean, there's nothing in here that's about Lunenburg, there's nothing in here that would directly benefit one resident of our community. That's where I'm at.
Made it clear. This, first I'm reading this, so I'm more than happy to listen to what the people have to say without making any pre, I want to know more. I'm hoping they have a presentation and they have something more than, well, it's all there and in here, so that's where I stand. I don't know that I have an initial feeling of approval or disapproval after reading it. I'd have to, I mean, we have the state flag right there, we could look at it and show the crowd what the flag looks like, I guess, if we want, but you can look it up at home too, if you're listening, of the state flag. I don't, they talk about the state motto, but they don't even mention the state motto here, so I don't even, I feel kind of semi-embarrassed that I know my home, my, my home state's state motto, but I don't know my current state's state motto. Does anybody know the state motto of Massachusetts?
I learned it in Latin class, I don't remember.
All right, so, but they don't even mention that, but I guess it's, they keep mentioning the, this flag and the seal, and the flag and the motto and the seal, so I think it only applies to the flag and the seal.
I think it's a nice tribute to the history of, you know, Massachusetts.
Yep, so I'm, I'm more than happy to listen to it and make a decision there, so I'm, I'm more than happy to defer this.
It's Latin.
Yep.
"By the sword we seek peace, but peace only under liberty," that's what.
Yep. There we go, so, I'm not gonna, I never took Latin, oh.
Well, thank you for reading that into the record.
Yes.
It didn't change my opinion. I, I would like to hear the presentation at town meeting, so I prefer to defer to them. This is also the first time I've seen this issue come up, so I personally would like to do a little bit more reading on it before I, you know, provide an opinion.
Sure.
I move to defer Article thirty.
Second.
Yeah, let me just, let me just pile on to that and just say that I'm not in a position to, you know, just being hit cold with this too. I really haven't thought about this. I gotta let this swirl around, get more information. I mean, it seems, you know, it's, it's not, you know, it takes thought, so I'll second that motion to defer.
Okay, and you get to vote first, Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. So a whole whopping one non-unanimous, so that was, that means we did a lot of good work during the, during the weeks before this, so that's good and I compliment the town manager and her team for coming up with all the numbers in time for us to make a decision. It's probably the most articles that we've ever proposed a recommendation on, just a couple of deferrals for more information, so that's good. Okay.
April nineteenth.
Yes, that's where I'm gonna go to now. So we have a meeting next week. Now, the town manager is away, week of April nineteenth, and there is a proposal possibly to move our week off to the twenty-sixth, to take off the nineteenth and then put, we wouldn't normally have a meeting on the twenty-sixth, but have one there, cause that'll be, that'll give us two weeks, two meetings before town meeting.
That's the kids' vacation week?
Yeah.
Is everybody okay with that? Lou, are you okay with that, moving, moving the week off?
Which, which week are we moving, just moving the nineteenth?
We're gonna, we're gonna take off the week of April nineteenth, that would, that's the school vacation week and we're going to have a meeting instead on the last Tuesday of the month where we would normally not have a meeting. So we'll put one on the twenty-sixth and then we'll have one on May third and then town meeting is on the seventh.
Yeah, that, I'm fine with that.
We'll all need to recover from the marathon on the eighteenth anyway.
Yes, of course, yes, that's true. Okay, so there we have that, so we'll make that change. Any public comment from the public?
No hands raised.
No hands raised, okay. Any public comment from the Board this evening?
No.
No.
Okay, well, the agenda being completed, thank you all for your good work and everybody who presented tonight and interviewed tonight, thank you for coming forward and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Good night, we'll see everybody next week. I do have one, I should have had one announcement, I'm sorry, I even forgot as I'm doing it. This Friday is the return of the "Are you smarter than a sixth grader?" for the Boys and Girls Club fundraiser at the Lunenburg Middle High School Auditorium at seven PM. Yours truly will be the host for the eighth consecutive time, so it'll be a lot of fun and if you'd like to attend and have a great time, cheer on your favorite teams, that'll be good, there'll be door prizes, there'll be raffles and, and there'll be first prizes for the winning team, et cetera, but all in all, it's just a great fundraiser and a great time for people of all ages, it's a good family event, so hopefully we'll have people come down and enjoy the evening. I'm sorry I didn't say that earlier, I'm sure the Boys and Girls Club is gonna kill me for missing that at the beginning of the meeting. Okay, until then, next week, take care of yourselves, take care of each other. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Hey, Lou.
See you later, Lou.
Good night, good night.